Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, April 19, 2018, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open and Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2018 Agenda Resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the eighth day of December 2017. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 15, 2017, edition of the Princeton Packet. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizole?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Stankiewicz?
Here.
Mr. Texoni?
Here.
Mrs. Allman? Mr. Williamson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Announcements. On April 24, the Neighborhood Zoning Initiative will hold a meeting at 12:00 noon in Meeting A, and this is sort of a wrap-up of where we are so far and where we're going, so I think all of you who want to attend, it will be worth your while to be there.
The Planning Board has been sunshined, so if members want to attend, they can.
All right. Did you all hear that? We can all attend at one time rather than wandering in and out. All right. Thank you very much. Before we go on with the rest of the agenda, as you know, this is Lee Solo's last stand at a regular Planning Board meeting, and Eileen and Gail Allman have worked on a resolution of appreciation, so if you'll all just listen for a few minutes, maybe you can also say a few words. Whereas Lee Owen Solo has served the Regional Planning Board of Princeton and the Princeton Planning Board as its planner, and the municipality as the director of planning from August 1, 1994, to April 27, 2018, and whereas Lee was instrumental to the Board and the application process in providing a smooth transition during consolidation, and whereas Lee has always made himself available to listen and provide guidance to the Board members, elected officials, staff, members of the public, and applicants, and whereas Lee's wisdom has often helped Board members consider controversial or difficult planning issues. His knowledge of the land use law of the municipal ordinances and the precepts of good planning have made dozens of former and current Board members better informed and our decisions sound, and whereas Lee has guided the Planning Board through meetings, hearings, and discussions totaling over 2,200 hours of meeting time. Luckily, this occurred at night, so it didn't conflict with Lee's tee-off times. And whereas during Lee's tenure as the Planning Director, he successfully established the center's designation, prepared the adopted 2008 Fair Share Plan, drafted and edited over 40 documents for the master plan that included new elements, amendments to existing elements, and reexamination reports, in addition to providing almost 100 land use ordinances creating or modifying standards for development. And be it resolved that it's only fitting that Lee's last meeting include an executive session on the COA litigation and another application for development, so that by the end of this night, his total hours of evening meetings, at least with the Planning Board, will be 2,203. Be it also resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Mayor Elizabeth Lampert and the Princeton Council, the Princeton Planning Board to recognize the service that Lee Solo has provided for the Princeton community, and now therefore be it resolved that the Princeton Planning Board offers its sincerest gratitude to Lee Solo and offers its heartfelt thanks to Lee for his years of service to the Planning Board and the municipality of Princeton. We wish Lee the very best in his retirement. Amen. (applause) I don't know if any of you have a few words you'd like to say before we go on with the next of Lee's hours of meeting time. Julie?
Well, I really appreciate Lee's help. I started with historic preservation in 2003, and Lee was involved in a number of issues that intersected planning and preservation, and so it's been 15 years, and time flies. So he doesn't seem old enough to retire. But anyway, I just really appreciate all the guidance and steady, calm advice and, you know, helping things go smoothly, and just very appreciative of your help. So best of luck.
So I feel like I really got a chance to, you know, what you see at Planning Board meetings is the proverbial tip of the iceberg. It's about 10 percent, maybe less, of what Lee does, and I got a little sense of what the rest of the iceberg is like when we worked together on the upstades to the circulation element and the bicycle mobility plan last year, and just want to really, you know, praise Lee for his collaborative effort, his attention to detail, and basically mastery of planning principles that really he demonstrated in working on that.
I'd like to express my gratitude, Mr. Solo. I think it was five years ago I showed up here as the, what was then the first school board representative to the Planning Board and didn't know a bulk variance from my elbow, and you were very patient and answered every question, and I especially am grateful for your leadership in the Neighborhood Character Initiative, which is ongoing, and could not have gotten off the ground without your guidance. So thank you very much, and I wish you the best for retirement.
Louise, did you?
Yes. I, of course, it's been a pleasure to work with Lee just in the last 14 or 15 months, whatever it's been, but before that, I got to know Lee a little bit when he represented Princeton, when Montgomery and Princeton were collaborating on various matters along our border, principally the Cherry Valley Road improvements, and where Lee led the Princeton team and represented the town beautifully in all the ways that people have referenced: steady, patient, collaborative, knowledgeable, and so from the get-go, I've known Lee to be a good partner and a very, very, very capable, terrific asset for Princeton. So, and we collaborated, I guess, on a local aid grant. Dollars came to both towns, and that's always a good thing, so thank you.
First, I want to thank you for the resolution, because I want to share it with the East, so she'll know I actually did something. The reason why I thought we were supposed to put all that together, and I appreciate all the kind words. It's a bittersweet thing for me. I've really enjoyed working with all of you. You've all been almost a part of my family, spent that much time together, I think, in over that time before, strong friendship, just listening to the list that we put together. It was nice to hear a lot of the projects, because the last few weeks I've had the chance to think back, what did I accomplish? I've been doing this for over 30 years, and I've been impressed with it. And as a planner, you normally get to talk to the individual, public works, and make connections with people, and start the plan.
Right. There we go.
So, but what struck me was many of the things that Eileen and Gail and Wanda identified in the resolution. We really did lay the groundwork for a lot of things. When you think about it, it started with our master plan back in '96 and the updates, but it set the policy for things like, there's an open space tax that came out of the master plan. We've preserved, in the time I've been here, over 500 acres, I think, of land. Three active recreation parks were constructed, all because the master plan sort of set the stage for that. David mentioned the circulation element, which addresses for the first time pedestrian and bicycle needs in the community, not just vehicular and traffic concerns. So we've done a lot through the master plan. We led the redevelopment downtown. We took the idea of, could you do something better with the surface parking? We now have the parking garage and a very vibrant mixed-use development, which has housing, retail, and Heinz Plaza, which I think has become a hub of activity for the downtown. That all was in the master plan. And all these things I'm saying is not just because of me, it's because of many of you have supported that and put it in the plan and made that all possible, and the list goes on from whether it was when the hospital left town, we worked together, the master plan identified again, developing a mixed-use. The neighborhood didn't have to suffer with a vacant building for a long period of time. Arts in Transit, which was also controversial, but now it's turning out to be a really vibrant center, a cultural center for the community, and that all was, it started with the master plan, which all of you had a part in. So I guess what I'm saying is thank you, because any success I've had has really been directly related to your support, your leadership, and I think we've done it in a wonderful way, and the friendships I've forged here will stick with me for a long time. So again, thank you all for the kind words, and I've appreciated being able to be here for the past 23 years, and as I said, you and I are looking forward to the next chapter. We'll look in every now and then, but we're hoping to be doing a lot of traveling and just enjoying this new phase in our lives. So once again, thank you. I do have one more thank you to Eileen, who's made my job much easier, and she's really the power behind everything and keeps us all moving along, but I do want to specifically thank Eileen for all the help she's given me in the 23 years, and if you don't know, Eileen and I basically started here together. I think she started one month before me. Yeah. She's not as old as me, but, so it's been a great working relationship with the staff here as well, including Jack and Derek. I didn't mean to leave you out, but you've encouraged that team effort, both amongst the Board members and the staff, and I think that's resulted in a lot of wonderful projects. So again, thank you, and as you noted, we do have one more meeting, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. And if you've got your agenda in front of us, we're up to the resolution for the executive session. Do you want to read this, Jerry?
Whereas NJHS 2,4-6-12, the Open Public Meetings Act, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Princeton Planning Board, Mercer County, State of New Jersey, as follows: "The public shall be excluded from discussion of here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: litigation, affordable housing update. It is anticipated at this time that the above matter will be made public. Upon completion of the litigation, including any appeals, this resolution shall take effective immediately."
All right. Roommate, right. Who was that? The first item are the minutes. You've had two sets that were sent to you electronically. First set is October 5 this year. Any additions, corrections? Louis, did you want to say something, or was it the other set?
I sent a few editorial, English major-type things, nothing substantive, no substantive changes, but I understand those have been incorporated and?
They will be.
They will be.
Okay. There were, yeah. Great, thank you.
I want to thank Louise for her close reading of these minutes. So if there are no other corrections? Maybe someone could make a motion to approve these with the changes that have been made, the minor changes? Anyone? No?
Move approval, Tim Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Any?
Second.
Okay. It's been seconded by Mr. Cohen. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie. The second set is from October 19 last year. Any additions, corrections? Anybody? No? All right. Could I have a motion for approval on that, then? Someone?
Move to accept.
Thank you, David.
I'll second Tim Quinn.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. And that brings us to the hearing for this evening. This is the Bandy Property Group. It's a minor subdivision with variances and Historic Preservation Plan Review. It's 223 to 231 Birch Avenue, and it's block 6902, lots 64 to 66. So, Mr. Solo, you want to outline this one for us?
Thank you.
As Lee is setting up, just wanted to advise that, I'm advised by Eileen that proof of publication and service are in order, and the Board has jurisdiction.
Jerry, you want to swear me?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So a sworn or affirmed?
Thank you, and good evening. As the Chair indicated, this is a minor subdivision with variances for the Bandy Property Group at 223, 231 Birch Avenue. I'm going to be using Sheet 1 that's in your packet, and I've labeled it as PB1, and basically, the subject property contains 11,510 square feet. It consists of three tax lots, and as the Chair had read them off, those are lots 64, 65, and 66, all in block 6902. Each of those lots is approximately 30 feet wide, and then their lot depth varies, ranging between 130 and 125 feet. There's a two-story, single-family home located on Lot 64, and let me just briefly orient you on the map where we are. I've highlighted in black the proposed subdivision. The three lots do something like that. In brown is the existing house, so we're going to create two lots and construct a new one. At the bottom of the map is Birch Avenue. To the left is Bayard. Adjacent to the subject property is the Bank of Princeton. Across the street on Birch, and to the east are primarily residential dwellings, and you have Community Park up to the north. The applicant, as I said, is proposing to create the two lots. New Lot 64.01, which is the one on the left, will contain 5,705 square feet, and a new home is proposed to be constructed there. New Lot 64.02 will contain the existing home and be 5,805 square feet. This property is located in the former township's R9 zone, as well as in the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. The zone permits single-family homes on 6,500-square-foot lots. A variance is required for lot area for both of the new lots. We've asked in the planning report that the applicant provide some testimony on the average lot size for homes along Birch, which is most of the R9 district. When you look at the area map and the tax map, you'll see that the lot sizes vary in general from a small 3,049 square feet to up to 9,583 square feet. Lot widths vary greatly from 30 to 65 feet. In my report, there is a large tree in front of what will be the new home lot, and we've asked that the applicant make every effort to preserve that tree or replace it if it is damaged during construction. There are a number of technical comments in the Joint Engineering and Zoning Report, and both Jack West and Derek Bridger are here, and they can speak to those if you have questions, but those should just simply, we would recommend, become part of any approval process if there is one. HPC did review the application. As I indicated, it is in the Witherspoon-Jackson. They have recommended approval of the subdivision and support the variance. They have suggested that the Planning Board require the applicant to retain and restore the existing house, and that the proposed architectural plans that were shown in the packet into HPC are acceptable, and that they would not come back to HPC for further review unless they want to change those plans. That's a brief summary of the application, and I don't know if the Board members have questions for me, or Derek and Jack, if you wanted to add anything.
I think you covered everything.
Thank you.
Do we have Derek and Jack sworn?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Any questions?
Any questions for any of us? If not, oh, David.
Sorry. I know that, you know, there's some kind of a state policy where undersized lots actually are consolidated if they're under the same ownership. Were these three lots owned separately prior to this project?
That I don't know. I think that's a question better for the applicant in terms of the doctrine of merger. That may be partly why they are coming in for the subdivision. I don't think that they could independently build on the two undeveloped tax lots, and they avoid that merger issue by coming in for the subdivision and the variance.
Okay. Anyone else? Julie, did you want to?
I just wanted to reiterate that HPC thought that the proportions, first of all, saving the existing house was the priority, and that was part of the developer's plan, and that house really is kind of on the edge and could use a lot of, you know, TLC to get it back to a really nice state, and also its proportions are in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, and so allowing another house of similar proportions next to it seemed much more harmonious than, you know, wiping it out and putting some kind of McMansion there.
Anyone else? Yes.
Which I strongly agree with and am glad about. Is there, and I'm sorry that I don't have the stuff right in front of me, I read it, but couldn't find it to review it again, so I'm sorry if I'm asking what is obvious to other people, but is, do we have an assurance that the existing home will not be torn down? Do we know that, or is it just we're going to do our best?
I think they'd have to go back to the Historic Preservation Commission to request approval to demolish it. It's a condition, you could make it a condition.
So if they did want to demolish the house, they'd have to come back to Historic Preservation, and I don't think that would be?
That permission would not be possible.
I mean, it's hard to know, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions at this point, why don't we move on to the applicant?
Good evening. I'm Chris Tarr, the attorney for the applicant. I'm going to introduce the representative of the Bandy Group. Can you hear?
I can't hear you. Get a little closer.
Better? A little bit better. I'll talk much louder. I'm Chris Tarr. I'm going to introduce the representative of the Bandy Group, as well as our architect and engineer, and ask that we all be sworn as a group to save a moment. So Michael Burns is representing the developer, David Barisi is the architect, and Jim Kamelak is the engineer. We're ready.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Could you please each state your full name with the record and spell your last name?
James J. Kamelak, K-H-M-I-E-L-A-K.
Chris Tarr, T-A-R-R.
David Barisi, B-A-R-I-C-I, architect.
Michael Burns, B-U-R-N-S, Bandy Property Group.
Thank you.
So it's the case that we went to HPC, and you've heard two references to that. Because there's a memorandum and because it, I think it says some nice things, I thought I'd quote from the HPC's memorandum, one sentence, if I may, and I'm quoting from the second page. "HPC voted unanimously to strongly recommend approval of the minor subdivision and support the lot area variances to accommodate the applicant's development plan." Then going on later in that paragraph. "The proposed single-family house is determined to be compatible in size and appearance to other houses in the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood. The restored existing house and a new proposed house will appropriately anchor the end of Birch Avenue adjacent to Bayard Lane, US Route 206." So we were very pleased with their reaction to the application. They did recommend that you condition the application with the keeping of the existing home, and that's quite acceptable, and it's the applicant's plan. So if you were to act favorably, that would be a condition of your approval, as well as a requirement to go back to HPC in the event it was to be demolished. So with that preliminary indication, I asked that the tax map be put up so that you can see the lots in question. Mr. Cohen accurately points out that they were in times past, three separate building lots, tax lots, still remain in that configuration today. There's some question. I know that the applicant owns them in two corporations to try to keep them separate and believes that the prior owners did so as well, but it doesn't matter. They don't want three small lots. They'd like to have two lots of appropriate proportion, and so whatever the legal situation would have been, their goal is to have two 45-foot-wide lots. Mr. Kamelak's going to testify for you, but he did this work, and these green circles that you see on the map there indicate lots which conform as to size, and he did the math, and only 9 percent of all of the lots on Birch between 206 and John Street, only 9 percent of them conform as to size. So we're looking for a lot area variance, and everybody else on the street except for that 9 percent would have to do the same. So I think you'll hear planning testimony that the characteristics of the neighborhood are such that the 45-foot-wide lots with two homes would be suitable. Now with that?
Chris, let's mark that as a hard copy of that. Exhibit A1.
Aye. It is a part of a slide set. We have a hard copy, but, and Eileen has it already, so...
Okay, so that the whole, the whole slide set...
The whole set is A1, and we're going to try desperately to refer to each sheet, and so that you know for your minutes, for your notes, what we're referring to. So the slide that's up on the screen now is actually the third page of the package. And Jerry, if I may, I'll just, can I give you one so you can mark it? And you can use it as we go through electronically. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael, who's just going to say hello and explain his thinking about the application.
Hello, and Michael Burns from Bandi Property Group. I want to thank the board for their time and consideration. Mr. Solo, congratulations on your impressive career. I'd like to retire with my wife and travel, but with three young kids, I don't think that's happening anytime soon. But Bandi, my company, we've been around for over a decade, about 12 years. My partner, Brian Eisen and I, purchase, renovate, build new, develop, own and manage real estate throughout New Jersey. We're down, we're located in Atlantic County, but we have properties throughout New Jersey as far up as Hudson, Bergen, and, you know, develop all the way through. We've done projects in Princeton. Nothing that ever required to be in front of the board here. When we looked at this property, I also want to say, because there was some question about the existing house staying, we certainly 100% want to keep the existing house, assuming that our application is granted. We have extensive experience with big renovations, full-gut renovations, and this project, we've walked through it and are very comfortable that when we're done, it's going to conform to the neighborhood and essentially look like brand-new construction. So we, that is absolutely our goal, is to keep that structure, and we've inspected it and know that we can. So I just want to make the board comfortable with that. We originally started talking about this project with Chris, and we noticed that there were the three tax, the three lots, and we initially toyed around with the idea of, do we go in for three? Do we build one big house? And we talked back and forth and, you know, got comfortable that what we're proposing tonight conforms to the neighborhood, is courteous and acknowledges the neighbors and what they would want there. And we think it really fits in with the scheme, as well as the house that we're proposing. I appreciate when we were in front of HPC that they seemed very pleased with our plans. And there was mention about a tree. We will absolutely work with the town to accommodate, you know, whatever we need to do to preserve the look and feel and the trees and whatnot. The, again, what we could have asked, if we don't get this, what we could be doing, which we certainly don't want to be doing, is building a big McMansion. We want it to conform to the neighborhood. So we appreciate that that's what is wanted, and we want to conform to that. I also, you know, we've mentioned the plan, spoken to the plan. Mr. Newland's here today. He's had an opportunity to view it, and he's spoken favorably. Hopefully, he continues to speak favorably about it tonight. We'll see if he wants to get up, but we have been, you know, we have kept what the neighbors want in mind. And with that said, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have our professionals here tonight, David and Jim, who could, who can get into the, you know, to the nuts and bolts of it. But if there's anything that I can answer now or as we go along, I'm here to do so.
Questions?
So we're going to, oh...
Does this meet the definition of a major development acreage-wise? And is it a half-acre, it does, doesn't it?
No, as far as stormwater, I mean?
Yeah, yes.
No, it wouldn't.
That's where I was going.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a major development.
Oh, okay. I thought, okay.
I just wanted to confirm that this, the new house will share a driveway with the existing house?
Why don't we show you the pictures?
Is that correct?
Let's show you the drawings. So with that, we'll get to the architect. I'm going to, David's been sworn. I'm just going to ask him to confirm that he's a New Jersey licensed architect, and he's prepared drawings for many projects in the area, just to confirm it for you to be qualified as an architect.
Accept his credentials.
Hello, my name is David Barisi. I'm a licensed architect. I've been since 1988, been doing this for a long time in New Jersey, in Pennsylvania, in the regional area. And I do a tremendous amount of housing, renovations, and new construction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're good. So we're going to go to your A1, which I think is Slide 5, and you might explain what you've got.
Sure. Up in the upper left-hand corner is a rendering of the proposed house. As you can see, the existing house is next to that, to the right-hand side of that. And it both has a front porch, which a lot of the homes on that side of the street have front porches, so it stays within the character of the community.
I was interested in this, just to confirm that the house on the right is actually a photograph, whereas your, the proposed house is your architectural drawing?
Yes, that's a computer model rendering of the proposed house. And it's a, it's a three-bedroom home, possibly fourth in the basement, and it has full kitchens as two and a half baths.
Mr. Quinn asked you about the driveway. Does that show up on the other side there?
No, the driveway is on the closest side. It's a separate, it's a private drive. It is on the property. It is not part of, it's not shared to the property, the proposed property.
It's showing two side-by-side driveways? Is that like separated by a little grass?
There's side-by-side driveways with the grass strip between them. And then we're also proposing a one-car garage in the rear of the property to meet the parking requirements.
Yes. I just want to point out that garage doesn't comply with a rear yard setback, 15 feet.
Oh, it has to be 15 feet.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Derek, the garage...
Yes, ma'am.
Is not in the setback, or it is?
It is in the setback. It does not comply with the rear yard setback. It complies with a five-foot side yard setback, but...
Plenty of room to move it up.
Yep.
There's plenty of room in the property.
Yep. So, next slide? This is A2, Slide 6.
These are all the floor plans and the front elevation of the house. As you can see, it's 18 feet wide by 40-some-odd feet deep. And all the sided and rear elevations. The siding would, it would be horizontal lap siding with shingles, which is common throughout the neighborhood.
Is the height the same on the proposed house as the existing?
It's approximately the same height. The height of the new structure would be within the limits of the zoning requirements for that district.
Let's go back to A1 and put them side by side. They're in perspective, but...
They're approximately the same height.
Because the new one will have habitable space in the basement, is that right?
Yes, it'll have a full basement down in...
But it's also proposed to have a bedroom or something?
The possible bedroom, you know. You know, there may not be a bedroom, it may be an unfinished basement with the probability, the capability of creating, because it has walk-up steps and egress windows down in the basement.
We just have a little confab. Mr. Quinn's question about the driveway raised an issue as to the, the existing home does not have an existing drive, and I think HPC suggested or recommended that we have another drive. And Michael wanted to bring...
Doesn't have a garage.
A garage. And to have two garages, and he just wanted to indicate that that's his intention. If the board would, we would have a garage for each of them.
You're not getting picked up.
That's a variance condition, we're not going to do it. We can't, we can't, we have to come back. So...
You're not getting picked up.
I'm sorry. The garage would be an FAR issue, which we didn't deal with, so we'll have, we'd have to deal with it another time. I apologize. Not adverse to it, and if, but the house is there, and the house is on a lot. We made the lot bigger, but it's still not big enough. The FARs in that zone, as you well know, are way over the permitted. So even to have a garage would further trigger a FAR variance.
That would be addressed by one of the neighborhood characters owning changes that's being considered.
Yes, in which case, we, the, one of the considerations is to allow garages at the rear, in which case, you wouldn't have to come back. So we'll just wait, see what happens. Sorry about that interruption. You got through yours?
Yeah, that's about it.
So if there aren't questions, the architect will quickly get Jim's testimony and then come back for everybody, or?
Yeah, I just, I had a question I wanted to ask Julie, too. Is this a moved house?
I'm sorry, is this a moved house? I read the report that it was built in the early '30s, but it's not a rainbow house. Like, it wasn't, those houses were moved, but as far as I know, this house wasn't moved.
Right, yeah. I came, it came up in a survey that I participated in years ago, because the original first owner was an African-American carpenter. And we didn't know whether he built it or whether he took, since so many houses were being moved from Jackson Street in the upper Palmer Square area, and the houses across the street, of course, you all know are those rainbow houses that were built by Princeton Municipal Improvement for the, to house the people who were coming off Baker Street. But the original owner was, in fact, sort of picking up business in this house moving period, and I wondered whether this was one of them. It's a style that very well could be slightly earlier than 1930. Anyway, this didn't come up at all in any of your reviews.
I didn't see any reference to it. So maybe Mr. Newland knows more than I do.
So we could move on to the planner. I know Leighton's going to talk in a bit, so maybe he could maybe speak to that. Jim Kamelak has been before you many times as a planner, both as engineer, and he's also going to give planning testimony tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to him and have him continue on with the slide presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me now? Okay. This is fine. So as we mentioned, the minor subdivision consists of taking three existing lots in the existing condition, 30 feet wide, generally consistent with many of the lots that front on Birch Avenue, and making an adjustment so that we have two slightly larger lots, with the fact that they are slightly less than the required minimum lot area of 6,500 square feet, where one lot is 5,705 square feet, and the other lot is 5,805 square feet. This particular slide illustrates the zoning requirements, and in this case, one variance is being requested for a proposed condition of minimum lot area, as I mentioned, by that blue triangle. And then all of the rest of the proposed zoning bulk requirements will be met as part of this project on the new lot. And the tax map, as Mr. Tarr previously discussed, we've just generally highlighted the subject lots, which have lot areas exceeding the minimum standard in the zone, which consists of approximately 9% of the overall lots here, as illustrated, that are comprised of these four blocks fronting on Birch Avenue and Lee Avenue within the R9 district. So it's pretty clear that based on the development pattern, as well as the structures that were constructed on these lots, many of which are 30-foot-wide lots, that this condition is pervasive, and, you know, it's a hardship condition. But this application, in our view, would be making a situation which is not so good in the existing condition with a lot dimensions, and improving them so that they're more consistent with your zoning ordinance. We also took a closer look at the two blocks in the vicinity of the property, and we've highlighted on this particular slide, the tax map block, the two new lots that are proposed with the brown flags and a blue lettering. New Lot 6401 at 5,705 square feet on the left, and O2, which is the lot to the right, at 5,805 square feet. And we took a look at the lots on the north side of Birch Avenue, and as you can see, the average lot area on our side of the street is just under 5,000 square feet, or 4,990 square feet. So you can compare that to the lot areas that are proposed, that 5,700 and 5,800 still well exceed what that average is. And just for some perspective, the range is from 3,000 to 6,500 square feet on the north side of the block. On the south side of Birch Avenue, we also took a look at those lots, which average 3,720 square feet each within the R9 zone, and they range from about 2,600 to 6,500 as well. So our conclusion with looking at the layout of the existing lots is that even though the proposed lots may be under the standard in the zoning ordinance by 10 or 12%, they still exceed what the average is, and we feel it's generally consistent. So from a planning standpoint, some other thoughts that we had is that this application would maintain the existing single-family residential use on the lot to the right. No demolition of the existing home is proposed within this historic district, the Witherspoon-Jackson And as I mentioned, this consolidates three non-conforming lots into two nearly conforming lots. In this case, the two lots are 5,800 and 5,700 square feet, and from our view, we feel as though this is a relatively minor deviation from the zoning ordinance at 10.7% and 12.2% of the minimum allowable, so just slightly under that by those percentages. The proposed lot areas larger, are larger than the average, as I mentioned, at 5,000 square feet for our side of the street and 3,700 on the opposite side. And again, a very small percentage actually even conform with the minimum lot area. Importantly, the application meets all other zoning criteria and will in the proposed condition, and we feel that this would eliminate the potential of one large residential structure that could be in excess of 4,000 square feet in one building, based upon the maximum allowable FAR on one consolidated lot comprised of the two, three substandard lots. And we feel that what's being proposed here would be far better from a planning perspective, and it also would fit into the character and the scale of the neighborhood that exists. And to that end, by the architectural plan and the building massing and the location of the proposed structure on the lot relative to the dwelling that will remain, we feel that it well distributes the open space to the adjacent sides of the buildings, distributes that mass fairly evenly across the frontage, so that we'll see a regular pattern of sideyards and a nominal exposure of the building frontages from a mass perspective along the sidewalk and the cartway. So from a planning standpoint, we're seeking a variance for this proposed lot area variance for the two new lots, and we could view it... for the two new lots, and we could view it in a C1 hardship situation based upon the unique configuration and dimensional scale of the lots, where the minimum lot area for more than one dwelling cannot be met, based upon the available land area. And we also see this, and perhaps even more strongly, in the C2 context, where the benefit, we feel substantially outweighs the detriment in this case, and supports several purposes of zoning, where the two slightly larger lots will be more in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and present a better impact and asset to the neighborhood. So those purposes are the positive criteria from the C2 context. Purpose A, to encourage municipal actions to guide the appropriate use or development of lands in the state in a manner that will promote the general welfare. Again, we see that in the context of converting three lots to two larger, more conforming lots, supporting the general welfare. We also feel that J supported to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts, and that's supported by maintaining that existing house on the lot to the right. The enhancements that will result, as a result of this subdivision, with improving the condition of that structure, and then I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement, and I think that lends itself to the massing and the scale, the location of the proposed structure relative to the existing structure that we discussed, and how we feel that it fits well, you know, on the street with its location and massing, given the size of the lots. In our view of this, relative to the negative criteria, we feel that it can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good. We don't feel that will substantially impair the intent or purpose of the zone plan, or increasing some of the conformity beyond what exists, and would also be melding pretty well into the existing neighborhood.
Questions of any of the witnesses?
Any questions? Anyone?
I really just have a comment, a point of interest for the members of the board. I was at the Historic Preservation Meeting where this was considered, and they were actually asked to render a decision on two matters. One was the subdivision itself, and the other was the structure that was being proposed. And the discussion was that, in fact, if the lots had been consolidated into one instead of two, there would have been serious consideration to deny the application, even though it would have been conforming with zoning, it would have been non-conforming with the historic district, and so I thought that was interesting.
Anyone else?
I just want to quickly commend the interest in, of course, the character of the district and the care you've taken with all of this, but I also want to call out your attention to the tree, because it is part of the character of the streetscape, but also because, this is a fun fact, a big mature tree like that offers 70 times the benefit in stormwater, in preventing water from getting to the ground in the first place, and in evapotranspiration, and carbon sequestration, all these ways, and we talk about losing a tree and replacing it, even with two fairly small caliper, maybe three-inch caliper trees, doesn't begin to approach the benefits of a really mature tree like that. So, thank you very much for your commitment to keeping that, appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, I think I'll open the meeting for public participation or comment. A number of people have waited very patiently. So, if you'd come forward and use the microphone?
Yeah, we swear all the members of the public in, so if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So I just want to affirm, should you please state your full name and spell your last name?
I can't.
And thank you all for your service. My name is Layton Newlin, N-E-W-L-I-N, and I'm sure many of you know me, and normally when I come here, when it concerns the Witherspoon-Jackson District, I'm angry because something's going on that I just don't think is right. The issue in question is directly across the street from my home at 230 Birch Avenue. My grandfather, Clarence Madden, bought this home in 1939, and to my knowledge, to answer your question, the house in question across the street at 223 Birch Avenue was owned by Mr. and Mrs. Folins, who purchased the house, I believe, and Ms. Folins was one of the original African-American teachers at the Princeton Borough Color School for Children, and she was a vaulted teacher for many years, and when the Princeton School District went and changed over to integration, she was one of the teachers that was considered by young white kids when it merged with the Nassau Street School, to be one of the best teachers they've ever had. So this house is indeed historic, as is the neighborhood. What I really want to do tonight is commend Mr. Tar, and let me look for my card, now Mr. Burns and the architect, for the care and concern that they have shown and given to the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood. What we have seen historically is when people come in and buy property, they want to build something that is counterproductive and does not fit the historical character of the neighborhood. I think you can all see, in this situation, they have taken great care and concern to do something befitting the neighborhood with a porch. They have indicated that they will redo 223 Birch Avenue, and please understand, you know, when I get up in the morning, I look out of my front window, and what I will see is something new, something vital, and something that makes the streetscape at the end of our street better. For all the years that I've lived there, I have looked out and seen an empty lot. Some time ago, there was a gas station there, and the Lees had a tavern on the corner. Now there's a bank on the corner. There is still a gas station on the other corner, but quite frankly, the end of our street, and I do what I consider a magnificent job, as a matter of fact, this evening, before I came here, I planted grass, because, you know, I've grown up to be my grandfather, so I'm really crazy about my grass and my curbside appeal, but my curbside appeal can be as good as it can be, but the point is, is that the people who were living on the other side of the street did not take care of their property. So at the end of my street, my house looked great, but when I looked across the street, it wasn't so great. But now, with this new design, and this new architecture, this new commitment, this new concern, and this new interest in this home and this property, it's going to make my property look better, it probably at the end of the day will also make my property value increase, and what will that happen? My taxes will increase, and maybe I'll have to get a second job, but okay. Listen, at the end of the day, what I would ask this board to do, and I mean this sincerely, as you look at Princeton going forward with affordable housing and the changes that will be made, these gentlemen here should be presented as a model for the best design, configuration, and interest in our community that can be. You're going to see a lot of people, as we grow in the future of Princeton, that are come here, that will come here without landish ideas of all kinds of designs and configuration, but they have given enough thought and enough care and enough concern to do something that fits the character of the neighborhood. And we have the Tree Streets, we have Chug Town, we have Mercer Hills, we have Valley Road. Going forward, you are going to be presented with a great many designs, and I would say to you as a real concerned citizen who has love for our town, and who really has a great understanding of the history, to use this, or to consider using this as a model for what can be done for growth in our community, for smart growth, and to look to people that are willing to, you know, everybody, developers are about making money, but they don't have to be about making things difficult and changing the landscape and character of a community. I think we have some good citizens here, and I think they will be extraordinary neighbors, and I ask you, with all due respect and with a glad heart, to approve this design. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Anyone? Sure? All right, well then I'll close the public session, and are there any more discussion or questions?
I have a procedural question, more curiosity. Can we make the fact that they can't tear down the house a condition of approval?
Yes.
Simple? Anyone else?
I do think the HBC suggested if they could plant a couple trees on the street, that that would help the streetscape. I think that was in the-
Mr. West memo, it's in there, yeah. If it would be of assistance, and if the board is inclined to approve, we read through the memoranda and found three or four specific items that would logically be specific conditions that we could agree to. So in Mr. Solos' memo, at section 3.2, he says to preserve the large tree, or preserve it if at all possible, but if not possible, to replace it, and we accept that condition. Mr. West, at paragraph 10, asked for two street trees, one in front of each home, and that's acceptable. He also asked in paragraph 11 that the driveway apron on lot 64.02 be replaced as being non-compliant, and that's also acceptable. And HPC asked that a condition be imposed, that the existing home remain, and that's acceptable, and also, as a technical matter, to come back with the final house plans for the new home to a subcommittee, which was formed to just make sure that the final plans reflect what's depicted in the drawing that you see.
Julie, is that what HPC-
Yes, correct, that is HPC.
So it should go back to the subcommittee in any event, because I guess I read it a little differently.
Exactly, so, yeah, we have a subcommittee ready, it wouldn't go to a full meeting, it would just go to the subcommittee, and then with the understanding that if it's acceptable, there would be administrative approval.
So those are five conditions that were called out, all the rest were generic conditions, which we would also agree to comply with. So we thank you very much for your attention and-
So Chris, in Jack and Derek's memo, if it was Derek also, are there any proposed conditions that you object to?
No, but I did want to call out and perhaps see that you would include those two, the street trees and the driveway apron, as non-genere, special conditions that might be called out with-
And the only other conditions that I would suggest is that they move the garage on the new lot out of this setback-
Correct, correct.
And that there be no garage on the old lot, while, as long as they need a variance for it, that might change, we know.
Well, we'd have to apply for variance, but hopefully the ordinance will be promptly changed and allow for garages in the back.
The driveway apron to the driveway is going to stay in the same place, is that right?
Yeah, existing, but it's going to be-
The existing driveway apron.
It's got cracks or something. Mr. Kamalek confirms it would be in the same place.
Okay, just so I know, it can be repaired or replaced in the same place.
Since there are two additional trees being planted, can I ask a couple quick questions about that?
Sure.
When people are planting, in effect, street trees, does the arborist get involved to make sure that the preparation and planting and all of that stuff is done to a high standard, and that the trees are appropriate as street trees and that kind of thing? Because, you know, when they're planted poorly, they just, it's just awful.
Yes, the arborist does get involved, assuming they don't plant it in the next two weeks before the new arborist gets here.
And if a new arborist is not, for whatever reason, maybe they could consult with our landscape architect? I mean, I just want to make sure that that's-
Yeah, if that were the case, we could use the board's landscape architect, Dan Dover-Millsky.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, any other conditions? Anyone?
I think that's it, it's my minor subdivision, Historic Preservation Plan approval, the conditions I indicated. Do we approve lot consolidations? I mean, actually technically, under the municipal land use law, you don't have to, but what's our practice? Our practice is do so?
Yes, in this case, you're approving the consolidation and then the re-subdivision.
All right, if there-
And the two variances.
And what?
And the two variances for the two undersized lots.
Is that enough? Somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll move, Julie Capizoli, I'll move to approve the consolidation and subdivision and variances and criteria discussed to approve the application.
And Historic Preservation Plan approval.
And the Historic Preservation Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. All right, would you call the roll on that, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alman? I'm sorry, Mrs. Gunnin?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
We have corn.
So thank you very much, and on behalf of all applicants who've come before you, we want to thank Lee too.
Move to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjourn? Hi.
Hi.